Two in and one out, cause it's more of it in. It's more of it in. Anytime I've been up there and I'll tell you, I've gone through there and never seen anybody in that garage shaft.
Yeah, I'm really trying to. The two out would be interesting, cause.
That'd be scary.
Trying to actually make the left hand turn.
That'd be scary.
I mean.
I can see one out and two in, so you reduce the traffic coming in off of.
So. My guess is that this would work just like a double drive through a dump can. You don't both get a green light at the same time. So this, this would move and then that would move, they're, they're not. Right, I mean, they. Yeah, I mean, I don't think two trucks are, it's not gonna be striped so that you're gonna be four wide, two in, two out, all the way through to the entrance. I, I. I think they would pick up with the existing stripping for left or right. But I don't think that they're gonna be pulling these trucks out consecutively. This plan doesn't show a dimension, but we could look to see how far back off the road. So. To give you a sense of what that length would be.
So with them modifying their driveway. Does that mean that? The state may have them uh modified some Ruby Road. That's been kinda talked about for how long?
I think that. So you'll see there's a only modification is that they're gonna be adjusting the radius here because they're gonna be widening the aisle. So there's gonna be some paving here to make that radius work. I don't know that they're gonna, they would be required to perform any other improvements unless the DOT feels that something that they're doing. Is going to trigger increased traffic generation. So if they were, if they were at a certain limit, if they had an O S T certificate for trips per day or whatever the site was. And they were gonna be doing things with parking spaces or changing something that would. Require more or potentially generate more traffic and yes, they could say we've got issues. But. Changing how users interact with the site in a way that doesn't increase traffic, I don't think the G O T would require anything more.
I think any widening of that driveway would be a plus because those, those trailers when they pull in. They really have to be almost out to the center line or past it when they're turning in. Uh, so, I mean.
That would help that.
Oh, absolutely.
Wouldn't also put people with the option of, hey, I can go down Ruby Road, cause now I can make that right end turn without being a little bit wider. This is double lane.
Well, they make that turn. They go there anyway.
They, most of the trucks come out FedEx, so they come down really early. Most, not all, but most. I, I would worry that you increase the truck traffic coming down there and going, oh crap, I didn't go the right way. And I need to figure out how to turn around. And in that road is a mess with the.
I mean, you see, you see, you see a lot of trucks coming off of seventy-four and going down Ruby Road. I mean, that's just. A matter of fact, that's, I probably see more trucks going that way than coming out.
Bottom line, I.
They're on their cheap.
Yeah.
So they're gonna go where they wanna go.
I guess that we feel we need this, but I, do we let Mike and staff take care of this, do we bring it before us?
Because the only thing that comes to mind is, you know. This has a potential for proving the, the traffic. On Ruby Road. But it would also give us some leverage to try to get some things that we've been asking them to do that they haven't. As far as like trash. You know, pick up and. Maintaining their site a little better.
Can we get out of that stuff, right?
So. We, they, they have a litter management plan, and when we get calls and complaints about trash, we, we call them. And they are typically responsive. We, they, that was part of the original approval way, way, way back and it still exists. Not great, but um. We, we've dealt with that, so. Really, the scope of what you're looking at is, is this, so it. Could you ask them, hey, can you put in a, I don't know. Pedestrian protected crosswalks so that employees can get over FedEx, you can ask them anything. Is it part of what you're reviewing? Not entirely. Are they, does that mean they'll say no? No, I mean, there may be other things, but. The only thing that, that comes into play here is that any requests that are outside of the, are in, within the right of way. Are gonna be fully within the jurisdiction of D O T, so even if they wanna do it. They would need to pursue that with D O T. If you had other concerns or you, you wanted to see more information related to the queuing length. Maybe you want to talk to them more uh about distance, you feel like it should be further back. So you can accommodate more trucks. I mean, those are things that we would be talking about.
We were also considering one time increasing the amount of signage. So cars wouldn't be turning into the, the turner part, but I don't know, is that, is that all under the purview of the D O T or?
If the signage would be within the right of way, then yes, and, and way back. This commission had some discussions about traffic issues related to this and we did send a letter to D O T and basically explain to them the issues and. What we thought could solve the problem and we, we provided that to them, what happened to it, I don't know, but. So I guess a long way of saying any signage that's along the road, we can't do anything with, cause they would need permanent. If it was signage that was beyond the right of way and it was on their property and you thought, hey, we really want you to do this or that. I think that that is something we could look at. The way that we deal with signage now versus how signage has sort of been handled historically is different. If someone literally, and we did the same thing at T A, at Loves. If someone puts up a sign that says truck entrance only, that's not a sign. It doesn't, it does not aid in the, the. The business endeavors of T A or Loves or FedEx to have a sign that says truck entries only. If they put a logo on it. If it says, you know, something else related to a service they provide. Uh, 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 good that they sell or something like that, if they can make money off of that sign. Then it qualifies as a sign and we deal with it from a signage standpoint. But, but like interior traffic circulation devices that don't include those things. Don't treat those as signage because the only person that loses if they don't go up is the, the, the user. The truck driver, the, the, the resident trying to figure out where to go. So you could ask for some of that in here. Behind this area, you know, in this area, if you thought that would be helpful.
That was more warning to people, you know, before they get to the driveway of the T A. I mean, maybe this queuing thing's gonna help, but I can't tell you how many cars pull in the wrong driveway.
Yeah.
And then they're trying to make a U-turn out of it before they get to the shack, you know?
Yeah.
This is gonna impact the other new property at all?
The only uh expansion is in this area here. There's, you know, widen that, that piece up. I think that, you know, they're gonna pull this, if you look at the plan, they're gonna pull the location back a little bit, so it's kinda more in this area, so they do pick up a little bit of width as it is. But they're gonna be, they're gonna be doing, let me go back to it. So you can see here. Relocated just in pole. The fence and then this is the. Um, limited disturbance relocation. And then the other plan that I have, I can go back to shows where basically the pavement is gonna go.
Do they have an estimated time of completion? Cause obviously it's gonna impact the traffic flow, just tractor trailers in and out of it.
They don't have anything in here for timing. I haven't looked at all the plan notes, but in their actual. Application.
They're cutting open the asphalt and doing this and taking that out, I mean, there's. It's all space that construction's gonna be underway with big rigs trying to get in and out of there and.
Are they gonna put someone doing track, basically a person flagging in and out?
Right? Yeah, so here's the, the both basically, I mean, this is a portion, but this is the proposed expansion here. Concrete paving, what's gonna happen there? So this kinda give, so this, this area is existing, so they're gonna be pulling it. Make, getting it wider by essentially that, that one lane. So you see there's two gates on this side and two on that side.
So I missed what you said, so that the third one coming down. That's not gonna be so that it can be an entrance or exit, right, whether setting up the toll.
They're gonna set it up. This will be two in and then the two out.
Yeah, so they, they don't have the flexibility to make in that third one either way.
No, it doesn't look like it, cause the way that they're set up to queue, cause of the way the truck cabs will, will be. They'll pull in this way and the truck, you know. The truck cab will be there before that. So they, if they pull in this way, I wouldn't be up against it. And I, I have seen trucks. Queuing there and I've seen them come in, but I. I think that the intent is this should speed up that timeframe, I mean, it should speed things up, I imagine. There'll be some subscription type thing, although I don't know, but um. I, I, I don't know that. The way that.
They're still gonna have to wait for the traffic at that Ruby Road, it's in order to pull out.
But I'm thinking as far as pulling in, as far as I know, and I, I am not an expert, is there's only one. It's a one. Single queue in. So if two trucks back up their end to end. Um, so I mean, this. Layout effectively doubles that capacity. So it would be if you had two trucks come. Fully queued and then you needed to get. I guess two more.
Yeah, maybe they have room, so they're not in a road.
And try and see why.
I think definitely two coming in is probably worth it.
And this gives you a bit of an idea. They're showing some of the turning movement, but. I mean, it would seem like there's enough room to get at least a, a significant, significant portion of that second tractor off the road. I don't know what those dimensions are, we could scan, but. I mean, if you guys have a sufficient level of interest in it, then I think the, the response would be that. Come back.
So three going in and one out would. Ease in going traffic and. Probably parse out the outgoing a little more.
Maybe, and maybe that's, that's a question for them, it's that our concerns are related to traffic on Ruby, can you do three in and one out? How many trucks are gonna be queued trying to leave? Right, yeah, right, they got plenty of space in their lot for queue.
Right, yeah.
So if they're gonna aim back.
Well, they can't come back much further, cause the gas tank, the fuel tanks are right there, that concrete square, those are the few, that's the fuel dump. And that vehicle needs X number of space around that when it dumps fuel.
Alan, parking spaces in that are quite a few.
I haven't seen it's full in New York.
Yeah, I mean. Okay, cause the, the number of parking isn't changing, it's just now. The flow in and out.
That's about average.
But are there any parking right behind there right now, when you were just around that?
Those are not parking spaces. They're not supposed to be parked there, I don't know when this truck, last I knew, those were not parking spaces, unless they made them parking spaces.
So that's open, so they're like saying, there's plenty of trucks to, plenty of room for several trucks to queue up. Waiting to get out. They want three in a row, three abreast going in. Six trucks at a time, that's pretty good. And if it is some sort of. Like pole station stuff. That's pretty fast, you don't need to slow it up. And you don't really stop and just drive through and then it beeps and it registers.
That would be another interesting point, is in. Or that it's activated and they just roll through.
No, it's, I mean, the way they've proposed it is that it's got.
It's a gate, it's a hard gate.
There, there's no gate, I don't believe there's a gate on the curb.
Yeah, see right here.
So there is a gate, so a typical gate that goes up and down, which it slows it down a little bit.
Yeah, so this is saying license plate recognition camera. So they're gonna come in, like it's just gonna be like an easy pass or whatever, they're gonna read the plates. And I guess there's, it looks like they'll be putting up a pay station if somebody is a, you know, a single user, but. And, and maybe that's something else they're gonna do, if they're gonna have. No, they're gonna have license plate readers on all of them.
That'd be interesting to find out how that.
Yep, so they're, they're getting data in and out, but they know how long trucks are there, so that helps them.
And I would imagine there'd be some automation so that if they're in the system or something that they probably are gonna lose right through. But I, I.
Well, certainly would say it's time to have any. Talk to somebody. Look at a badge or that kind of. At a long one, you tell them just.
Yeah, don't think they've got anybody in that garage shaft for a long time.
Right, I, 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 I.
I'm just thinking at times we've come in with a tire truck and there's nothing there, we just break the hack and.
So it's already obsolete, so that's why they're taking it out. How do we feel we wanna talk to them or not? I don't particularly want to, if you guys do want.
Well, there's plenty of discussion, if you can relay the messages to them.
Yeah, I mean. The uh, stuff that we've talked about would be basically if there's automation. Three in versus two in. We had some, just some questions about Ruby Road.
That's the main question.
Yeah, how, how to get two out? It's like one red unless it's really busy and somehow someone pushes a button and it swaps, so you can have the two. Exits.
Well, Ruby, Ruby Road is so narrow. I mean, you see those semis coming out of there and some of them are coming in, you know, they take. They really have to pretty much wait, if the guy is swinging up, he's got a real long cab. One of those overnight, you know, cross plenty of cabs, he's gotta swing wide and then there's a truck coming out, how's, it's not gonna alleviate. Too much of that.
I don't think it's gonna make it worse.
Well, I don't know, I don't think it'll make it worse, but there's still, you know, if they have two in, two out, you can get two. When those, when somebody's pulling in. He's still gonna have to swing wide and those two noses are out there, how's that supposed to work?
That might be alleviated, if they're moving. Down Ruby Road into their parking lot and that's the out truck.
Yeah.
And you only have that one. That might not be too bad for that one coming in to swing, not to swing.
But if you, if you have two coming out and two coming in, it's, it's, it's no better than one.
Yeah, and, and I'm happy to ask them about these, these things, if I say. Can you explain to me what your thoughts are related to two and two, can you consider three in, we have some concerns about. Competing trucks and whatever else. They may say, hey, here's all the reasons why that won't work. And then, or they may say, we want two in and two out. If you're not okay with the answer being, we want two in and two out, then I think they should come before you, if you're okay with. Whatever that answer is and what the logic behind that is. Then I think we're, we're good, but, you know, I can make some recommendations to them if they say, here's why this works, or here's why you don't feel there's gonna be a concern, there's gonna be, you know. Length or, or we've run the models as they've shown, like. But if there's some of these things that you feel really strongly about and wanna try to press them on, I think, you know, I don't wanna speak for you. If you feel confident that you've explained them to me and, and, and we can talk about some of these, I can give you their answers. Um, how will the automation work, the three in versus two in? Talking about queuing out to Ruby and um, the deep, you know, the, confirming D O T. Wanna verify if there's enough room to get more than just that one truck off the road. Um, how are they gonna deal with the construction sequence? And is there anything that could be trying to help passenger vehicles that, that enter by accident? So I can get you answers on those things. Maybe. The, what they can do is nothing, maybe they considered it. So it's, so that part's up to you on what you're more comfortable with.
Something strikes a red flag, be like, whoa, that's not what it sounded like, and definitely they should probably come back here.
Okay.
Like something that's obvious. Oh, we don't know, we've never tried it, we're experimenting.
I'm sure they run dozens of truck stops. These guys, you see them all over the place, T A's.
Okay, but I can talk to them if any of these seem like they've just flat out not considered it, or it seems reasonable and they're just not interested. At that point, I can. Let them know they'll need to come back. But just to be clear, they're not getting a pass on any of the regulations, they should, it's just the process, but the criteria is the same.
All right, brings us to uh, light of math unfinished business, uh, item number one, draft amendments. Section eleven, dev zero damage one, home occupations.
So in the packet, there's two things, one is a colorful table, which is. Essentially. My first pass at our discussions related to home occupation, so red strike out as things to remove, red. No strikeout as things that are new and to be added. And. This is in response to sort of me just considering everything that we've talked about, all of our notes and stuff that we've looked at so far. And I'll just pull it up if it's easier for people to look at. Just in case, but um. Essentially, kinda high level. The proposal would be to create three categories of home occupations, a home office, a home occupation and a rural home business. Terminology is subject to change based upon what you. Feel, but um, the idea would be that, that the home office is the, the accountant or somebody who's working from home, no employees. Absolutely no evidence, period. And that's allowed as a right, so you don't need to get an approval from staff or the commission to do that. But there also is no exterior evidence um, of any kind. The next category would be the home occupation, which is sort of the more traditional thing that we're. Thinking about with a lot of these, it would be a term that we would. Keep in the regs, and then the third category, rural home business, is sort of that larger scale. Type of home op, operation or operation that is based in a home or from a residential property. And sort of covers some of the more intense activities that we've seen or that may be already approved. But I tried to create more of a separation between the two, so kinda going across. Um, you've seen the, the compliance review, which is when it comes back up. Rather than saying this comes back after one year, this comes back after two years or whatever. I'm putting it here as needed, really what that means is we will do a review for compliance if there's a need to do a review. So if we get a complaint or there's an issue or we wanna. See what the status is, we're gonna do that, but I didn't wanna. Basically say that one or two of these categories don't have any review. Um, and then the third one I put in here as, as determined by the commission. We can certainly set that as two years or one year or five years, but. Um, I thought at least for now, based upon the activity, the type of business and all of these other things, it may be easier to. Do that based upon the. Type and, and the application.
So for instance, so rural home business, maybe an excavation. Kind of tractor, some of the equipment laying around, so that kinda.
Yeah.
Tree, tree guy, uh.
Right. Yep, and if you are worried that the equipment storage may grow or the screening may not be. The idea that you're gonna ask them to maintain compliance and you're gonna do those reviews, I think is helpful to keep them honest. For this, I put property types, or something we haven't really talked about, cause it doesn't really come into play here now, but it could. Is. What if somebody that lives in an apartment or in a duplex wants to have a home occupation? That can get tricky, because you know, obviously if it's in an apartment, um. That might not work, and depending on what is allowed and, and kinda how that's going, it may be complicated. Right, and so, uh, yeah, at that point, we would certainly ask for an owner authorization, but like, um. So right now, we have it listed by zone, you'll see the way that it's in the, the regs here, we have eligibility by zone, but we don't say. That someone that is in an apartment can't run a tree business. At the property. Logistically, it, it probably wouldn't get approved, but if we don't actually create that distinction, then I think. Particularly when we start talking about the, the larger operations, if you will. Clarifying that they're only allowed in those zones in a single, on a single family dwelling. Is an important distinction just for clarity. So. The next one talks about use restrictions, we had that in here for one of the categories and not the other. You'll see I'm suggesting we take it out, you'll see I'm also suggesting we take out allowable uses. So some of the regulations that we reviewed, Tom is the one that comes to mind, is I'm most familiar with, they don't say. You can't do this, you can't do that. They sort of just look at the impacts. Um, and so I'm, I'm suggesting we lean a little bit more in that direction. Um, I think we should still keep that prohibited uses language in there. Um, and I've tried to clean it up and get a little bit based upon. You know, where we are, just with the types of businesses we see and terminology, but. Having a list of allowable uses, to me, I think, when you make a list like that, it's almost immediately out of date. The types of things that we see people doing. Like cottage food wasn't a thing all that long ago. Other, you know, well, we talked about the farm stuff, which is separate, but it's just this idea that these types of things really are very fluid. And what we call it, to me, is not as important as how the operation is conducted on a property. So um, suggesting we move away from just literally a list of uses and, and kinda just stick to the impacts. The next one, uh, permitted exterior evidence, so this is one that we kinda talked a lot about, the permitted as a right, there's none allowed. The next one, it says shall involve no outside storage or display of goods or materials or other evidence. Other than a permitted business vehicle, well, um.
I, I have a question about that one. You drive down the road, someone's got a phone. They do, you know, carpentry, little picnic tables or something. So they can't display that picnic table on the outside of their house according to that. They don't have, it's not big, it's just in a small shop in their basement that they use, they meet every other requirement. They can't put that picnic table or those hand carved things outside, winch on something that they.
Based upon current and proposed, no. Not to say that, I mean, obviously we can make it say anything, but, but this, the language here, other than what I'm showing in red is, is how we have it currently written. Um, none of them really allow for any exterior evidence. So I have in here, other than a permitted business vehicle, and this is in alignment with. Holland and uh, several others. Basically. There's a difference between a business vehicle and a commercial vehicle, so the guy that has an F two fifty that he takes with him, cause he's an electrician. Does not fall into the same category as the triaxle. And so what I'm suggesting we consider, and this is sort of a draft. Would be that we, we, we create a distinction between the two, and if you look further down, you'll see vehicles. And I have here, what would be allowed based upon the type, so if you have a home. A home business, you're an accountant or. I don't know, a dog trainer or something, you have a regular. Passenger vehicle, but maybe it has a sign up, it comes and goes from your house, so, but you're permitted just that one. Passenger type vehicle associated with the business, no commercial vehicles, no equipment. Then when you get to the next. Uh, level, you're allowed. Three business vehicles, which are again are. More of a passenger style, with someone driving every day, one piece of commercial and one uh, a piece of equipment. And then again, um, for the business vehicle, um, the larger special permit for two and four. So these numbers are. Really. Sort of a starting point to create a distinction between the categories, but also trying to bear in mind what we currently have, the businesses that are in operation. And not wanting to make everybody non-conforming, four pieces of business equipment and, and. You know, potentially two other vehicles or four other vehicles, seems like a lot, but we have businesses that have them. So I'm trying to toe that line, but these obviously we can slide up or down. The non-resident employees, I'm keeping this to uh, moving this over to two. So, um. And then add, and then uh, changing this to, to a total of four. Um, again, these numbers can be adjusted. Last one, uh, that I'm adding is a separate category for screening, obviously the first one, no screening necessary. And then this here. All commercial vehicles and equipment shall be stored indoors or visually screened. So that's language if we, we basically have currently, though we don't have it listed in this way. We would have to adjust this if the commission wanted to do something with allowing some exterior evidence. But um. On this third category, it's gonna come before you anyways, so you have some of that. But on this third category, it's gonna come before you anyways, so you have some of that discretion through the special permit process. Visits from members of the public. Not to exceed four per day, the one that we have here now is is by appointment only. So not to exceed four, and then this is as determined by the commission, again, based upon the types. It's a bit of a sliding scale, and then again with parking. And I I thought about it and I, to my step, I don't, there's very few properties in town that I think of now, that for ninety percent of the types of home businesses that you'd see are not gonna be able to accommodate vehicles that would be on site, so mandating a set number of parking spaces. You know, to me, I I think we should not encourage any larger of a parking area than would be necessary. So I'm I'm just sliding this to as determined by the commission, and then this is gonna be left at two plus one per employee. Our requirements now for single family home, say, have to have two, which a driveway accommodates. So if they have an additional employee, they need to be able to provide that. And then the signage is not proposed to change. Then I'll take a breath and you can tell me what you think.
I'm not comfortable with that no visible evidence, it's the same as the first one. First is none, and the last one is no visible evidence, what's the difference?
I like the format.
Yeah, I like the format, it's great, no, that my only hangup is that, because I can, I can hear the voices coming and saying, I saw that this person has a business. Your matrix says no visible evidence. We're just, I mean, no visible evidence in June, a lot of visible evidence in January. What's gonna get everybody compliant to? Well, that's it, you're, I did, we're opening ourselves for a horrible compliance issue.
Well, I, the reason why I have it though, right, is that this doesn't actually move the needle on that language. Now, I'm not saying that it shouldn't be that way, because we have a lot of businesses that are kind of much more apparent than I think would be what was the intention. And so I, there's things that we could do. That middle section is by, is a certificate of zoning compliance by staff, which means that you would we would need to define what those requirements would be, so if there was exterior evidence, what it would be or how the exterior evidence would be presented, whether it be uh where it's located, where, whether it's the total area that it takes up, whether it be I don't know, partially screened or or something that moved, I don't know, but the only way to keep that middle section intact as is with not coming before the commission to be the special use permit would be to define the standard so that if we said you could have that exterior evidence, there would be very clear yes or no questions to determine how they would comply.
Like when you say there should be no visible evidence or indication of the operation outside on a rural home business.
It may be limited, yeah, I like the word limited, but then that's subject to interpretation, but maybe that's okay.
Well, on the, that last section of the room, you can interpret that, because they're gonna come before you and say, this is what I want to do, and this is how I propose to screen it, and you may determine that, you know, okay, well, the back forty there, you know, when the tree trees have no leaves, you can see it, but it's it's not visible from the road and it's, you know, largely screened or whatever. Maybe they want to park it so far off the road.
No, but he's saying no, no, no visible, then it's not. And that doesn't give us any wiggle at all, even under a special permit. Because so as I say, well, you can see it from the road, they go, well, start with can you permit? We're kind of making a pretty hard line here in my opinion.
So I I do have the allowable uses, I get some of them don't make sense, but is there a way for the general public to say, I'm going in for this, which category do I fit in, or I think I fit in? Like, these are examples, something of X, Y, Z, not limited to, but that that type of language to categorize each of those three. Because if I come in here with something, I don't know where I fall in.
Well, you would, you tell us what it is that you do, so maybe you say, I want to sell quilts. And I'd say, okay, well, are you gonna keep the materials to make those quilts outside? No, okay, well, you're good there. You gonna have any business equipment or vehicles? No. All right, what about, how are you gonna sell your quilts? Well, I'm gonna sell them online. Are you gonna ship them or are they gonna come to your house? Well, they're gonna come to my house. Well, well, is that gonna be advertised or what? Well, I'm gonna have them come by appointment only. Okay, well, by appointment only meets the criteria, because you're not gonna exceed the four per day. Well, I think I'm gonna have, you know, more, it's gonna be based upon, I don't know, something else, or it's a different style business than if it I'm not telling you that you can't have more than four, I'm saying if you have more than four, fall into this category. Right, so for me, it would start here, if they didn't meet that criteria, we would go here. If they didn't meet that criteria, they would go there.
That would be an average, right, that would, I mean, not gonna
You're gonna stand there.
Find somebody, right.
And the other thing is, we're maintaining this this language here, which I've increased based upon the discussion that we had for percent of the building, so it currently limits them, it's saying you can't be in an accessory building. Which based upon the feedback I got from you guys, that didn't seem necessarily to be on the point. And then twenty-five percent of a house is kind of small. So I'm removing this and saying that it can be in an accessory building, but it's limited to fifty percent of the livable floor area of the house. And in this area, again, removing that and saying it can't exceed the total floor area.
Yeah, I like that, because we took of all the stuff, we just want to throw out the accessory dwelling. We could say part of that wouldn't be an office as well, so I mean, it's worth.
Are you sure you said accessory dwelling, because it looks struck out of the study?
We're taking it out, meaning if we're not adding the limitation.
Just a comment, how enforceable is the interior floor space allocated for a business? I brought this up before, but I mean.
When they submit an application, they should include a floor plan just to show what it is that they're doing. And for some of the old ones, we do have something where they just have a sketch of their house, and they're showing, hey, well, this is my home office, it's the third bedroom or something. I think that the intent is to limit, yeah, I mean, the scope of that, so you don't have someone like, a good example would be Terry Echols, who has the pediatrician's office at four thirty-four Talon Turnpike. So her house had to be sized correctly so that the office would work. And so that it's like you don't end up with a full blown commercial business, just a little place for people to live. Could you, I guess you could say, listen, you know, we're concerned about the intensity of this business and we want to be able to verify that the home is still operating as a residential dwelling. I think we could still request that.
And a question on vehicles for home office. Is no commercial vehicles, is that allocated to the home office, or is that if somebody has a commercial vehicle or a piece of equipment, and then they decide to get a home office? Because they have that, does that mean that there's a problem? Or is it related just to the the proposed home office business?
Yeah, I mean, if it's related to the business, then I think it falls under that, if it's not. If, yeah, I mean, I guess if somebody is an accountant and they they have a bulldozer because they own a hundred acres, I think that we wouldn't connect. I I would, to me, that it would have to be something related to the business that's being provided. People have strange things they accumulate. But I mean, I I think you could interpret this, and you guys tell me what you think. But I think you could interpret this to mean, let's say this guy has his own business and and he's, I don't know, maybe he's a self-employed I don't know what you call it, but like a driver for hire, and he has a two hundred thousand dollar Peterbilt tractor that he has in his driveway, and he wants to get hired to run jobs. He meets all the criteria of a home office, except that it's a commercial vehicle, which then kicks him into another category. So even if he meets those other criteria, he would then go up from there.
It's not prohibitive, it's just a little bit more scrutiny. We can't do it, it's just a different level of permitting. Well, one is by right, the second one is by staff.
Uh, this one, eighty-five?
Eighty-five?
Sixty of it is for the city. Twenty-five is us, it's like the slow, so the lowest application would be.
I like the make the comment, it's great, and I like the formatting. The the whole middle section there in our regular regulations, we have some hard prohibitions. Yeah, I'm not gonna have an abattoir, a slaughterhouse, a recycling center, though, barely two pages of things that are prohibitive as zoning without getting anywhere, any commercial, non-commercial, whatever. But I think we're back us onto something there, where maybe to provide some guys, like you say, we always encourage your business to come in on a that free meeting, where no non-binding discussion. And whenever we have those, it does seem to go well. But yeah, maybe something so someone knows where do I fit in?
So I guess one of the potential sort of conceptuals I would think would be what if somebody wanted to run? I don't, let's say they wanted to run a a tree business, and they wanted to have you know, the the truck that pulls the chipper, and they wanted to have another truck for some equipment. And they had a couple of business vehicles and a backhoe, but you know, whatever, let's say they had a half a dozen pieces of things for a home business. So it would be a rural home business, right now, even though we're proposing to expand it, they, let's say they wanted to have all the equipment in a barn, right now, they, they would not be able to do that, because we're tying that, so someone building a large accessory building or having this operation out of a large barn that may be on their property, they'd still be tied to the size of the house. And granted, we're significantly increasing how we deal with this now, because it's so was so constrained before. But I guess the question would be, do we want to perhaps put a limitation on it separately or think about it differently? So if someone does want to say, hey, instead of screening all this stuff, I want to put it all in a barn, right now the regs wouldn't let them, so we'd be asking them to screen it and leave it outside. Do we want to think about doing it a different way or or increasing the size? But do we want to have a limitation on it at all for the special permit site?
What do we say about the barns? Well, we changed our rules on that. We we, you can outbuild a barn that's used to be no more than fifty percent of the house, which we still have that, we still have a very interesting graphic that has the size of an accessory building in versus a garage based upon the size of the property. Yes, I remember when that came up, I said, so really, so you can't have the nice little New England cape of the big barn anymore? But that was only on five acres or less, right? I think over five acres, you could do whatever you want. Am I wrong about that? There was something about the size of the land, I think that was one of the books.
Right, so the size of the land tells you.
Right, so, okay, so if you have a hundred acres, you could build three big buildings, put everything in there, and we wouldn't have much to say about that. Even for a rural home business. Well, it's only on, well, we don't, we don't mention land size in this paper, three acres.
Well.
Rural home business.
Okay, I see now, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Minimum lot size, three acres.
Yeah, I think we had talked about that in a preview.
Yeah, 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 no, I I remember, I just, my eyes.
Most everybody that has commercial equipment, they park it outside.
Well, yeah, I'm thinking of Dad's sons, a Lucio, I know the guy that got a fire truck parked on the Friday night. What he uses for, and it's a great business, everybody loves those guys, they're great. Uh, you, whenever they do a job, people rave about them on their Wellington pages, and you don't I don't want to go anything, slow that guy down.
Parameters of what's allowed, I mean.
He's got a quarter acre lot with a double, yeah, I mean, that doesn't mean anything. But I'm sure we'd want to hurt the business. Feel right? But again, you gotta drive by that, and somebody says, hey, you know, person's a violation, somebody didn't like the job they did. Somebody doesn't like the old fire. And the first one I was talking about down my road, I'm all, I don't see those, is he open cab with the ladder?
Yeah, I guess they do it. Next thing you know, will be confirmed by stacks of eight by ten losses.
Yeah. That'd be fun. And I I wonder how many of these, like, say, I wonder how much of that stuff registered to the farm? You know, all that equipment could be farm equipment, and either once in a while use it on the town, I'm sure a lot of it's signed on the property. All the jobs.
Right. Yeah. So I mean, I think that, you know, the the way to get real comfortable with this is to think about some of the stuff that you know that's around town. The trouble is, I think there's some that are around town that are probably not home occupations.
That's absolutely right.
And and they've grown over time, and so the tolerance and trust and knowing who they are and how they function means they're things that were okay, but but if someone showed up tomorrow that you didn't know and said, I want to do this exact same thing, probably wouldn't have that same.
So we, but we do that with a lot of things. Old homes that weren't built built to code, we don't make people pare them down.
Right.
We just have this. It's a bid before these regulations existed, they're allowed to continue.
And and so, yeah, by by adopting these standards, I mean, in some ways you are protecting them, because if they're pre-existing nonconforming, they they aren't gonna have to come into compliance with new standards if they weren't held to them previously, but you don't box yourself into having to decide that another operation with the same circumstances in another area town.
So on that minimum left side, I wonder, is there any value in referencing that whole thing about the barn size was limited to a to an acreage as well? So if it was, if you had, you need a lease, okay, well, that that comes up under the special use permit process, so that's fine. All it means is that it gets a different level of scrutiny, there's more conversation, commission approvals are out, that's fine. I'm, that makes sense. I'd like to see the note taken out, maybe changed to limited.
Would you like to see the note?
The note, the note taken out of the. Visible evidence, and change that to limited. Should be limited, and then we can decide on what limited, just like we did with what we're in this propane thing. We made it limited, but put it on offense, and I need to use the rest of the can.
Mike, can you just read the way you're seeing the percentage of building used for occupation? How are you reading that sentence? I'm I'm just getting confused with the red in strikeouts, et cetera. And it's all of a sudden I'm getting confused, it's been a long day. So how?
It would read shall occupy an area in the principal dwelling, which is no more than fifty percent of the livable floor area.
Okay, you have a strikeout of fifty percent, with fifty percent.
What?
You struck out fifty percent.
No, no, this.
The last one.
Go to the last one. How are you interpreting?
Shall occupy an area in the principal dwelling, which is no more than the livable floor area of the home.
So the entire home could be the home occupation, there's no house? I I I'm playing devil's advocate in the way it's.
So if you have a two thousand square foot house, then the area associated with the home occupation can't exceed two thousand square feet. It can't be the entire area of the house, because it it wouldn't then be an accessory.
But you don't say it's an accessory, you can't have an accessory dwelling. In my, the way I would interpret it.
But a home occupation is is an allowable accessory use on a lawfully, to a lawfully existing dwelling.
Rural home business, the way you have that written does not say it can be an accessory dwelling, I can't put up an accessory dwelling to store my equipment in.
You mean building? Not.
Accessory, yeah, building. Because you're striking out accessory building.
Right, I'm, well, I'm I'm striking out accessory building from both. Because one of the things that we don't have in here, which is that second section, was is the accessory structures, which is part of one of the things I want you guys to give me direction on is, do we want to limit? Because some of the conversations at the previous meetings has been, I don't think that if someone wants to have a large workshop, because they're they're a carpenter, that they should be limited to having a five hundred square foot workshop, because they have a two thousand square foot house. So the accessory structures and buildings, I I think should be just dealt with separately. Because I don't think it's necessarily fair to hold the accessory building size to the standard of the size of the house. So I want to pull it out of this, because I think we should deal with it separately.
But how would we deal with it separately? I guess I'm not seeing the the change.
I think we would deal with it separately by by developing language which which would limit what they could do as far as either constructing or having accessory to, uh, building, you can me sand it on the property.
I'm sorry, we were doing dwelling for so long.
Because it's, I mean, we have a lot of people that have large accessory. Because it's, I mean, we have a lot of people that have large accessory buildings on their property. And if they wanted to have a small business with two trucks and a trailer. We're basically saying your house isn't big enough, so you gotta have them outside or or screen it. So I think we should just deal with it independently. Uh, but I'm looking for.
So accessory structures, I'm I'm thinking just the rural bit, home rural business. Per commit, like as determined by the commission, did that language go in there and say? Possibly not allowed in the other two?
The, any not allowed and no, no.
Definitely not in the first.
Right.
But throw in that as.
So, so in the rural home business. For percentage of bill, percent of building used for occupation. I mean. To occupy an area in the principal dwelling, which is no more than wood floor space in the home. Well, the principal dwelling in the home are the same thing. I mean.
That might be hard because. I I can't see someone running a rural business that occupied, they could occupy enough space that could be bigger than their house. But then they couldn't live in their house. I guess that's where.
Occupy an area no greater than principal dwelling.
Yeah, you understand it's gonna be in their dwelling.
Yeah, somehow get the word in. And that gets you into that accessory structure.
Right, it does.
Right, right, right. I suppose.
And at that point, they're not in the house.
Right.
An accessory dwelling.
You go to a whole basement with a shop in there and you can be good with stuff there. Well, it could be, it could be in the building and it doesn't happen. I think we probably would want. Ideally, if people had outside buildings and they were doing their stuff outside online, that would probably be best. So we should probably encourage that through our language, rather than just.
Could you tie that accessory dwelling size just as something to think about, back to the size of the lot?
Well, we are. Our regulations do that. So this is the percentage of gross floor area as determined. Is this for building structure height restrictions? I think this is allowable accessory building size.
I I I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw a dart at the wall and I don't know if this is gonna stick. You've got houses in town that are over five thousand square feet. If that person and they, they, some of them may or may not be on a three acre lot. And that person decides they're gonna do, they want to apply for a rural home business. And I can build a dwelling the size of my livable floor area, which is five thousand square feet. It's not gonna fit on that lot.
Well, if it doesn't fit on the lot, then they can't do it. Just means the regulations allow it sort of conceptually. They can have an accessory building that doesn't exceed five thousand square feet. But if they have a five thousand square foot home. And they have ten acres and they want to put in a five thousand square foot barn to house their. Four pieces of equipment and their lumber and their wood shop. Is that a problem? Yes or no? I don't know.
Don't forget, there's also public hearing and that.
Yep.
Level of business. Yeah, I wonder. I'm wondering if maybe, maybe when there's an accessory building. Of a certain size, it automatically goes into the rural home business, so it becomes a special permit. And if that's that higher level of scrutiny automatically, do you do that too? No, it's just dispel some of them. Yeah, and then take the pressure off of you. So then you're not. You have to, so that doesn't feel right, and that one did, now you gotta, now you have to. Play that game with everybody.
That's the point. I can do something like that.
I'm wondering, I don't know, I don't know if that's a good idea or not, but it does sort of take that. Since there's so many variables to that accessory building and what that means. We already said an eight, so somebody puts an accessory dwelling unit, that's great. And then their parents die and now they got this nice apartment and then big old garage, they say, I'm gonna start a little business. That should be okay. I think that should be okay. That doesn't seem wrong to me. But it may not, so then I would think that would be special permit, you're changing the use, makes sense. Fine thing to do, but let's talk a lot. Give enough to clean this up again.
Yeah, with some of that stuff and then I think we've increased a, add a limitation for the accessory buildings. So that it requires a special permit.
Um, maybe next meeting, we try to get this a little finish line.
And then we would refer it, yeah, start the public hearing process, but. Um, the only other thing that I can do, which I didn't. Because I wanted to get feedback is, one, this, so this creates a distinction between a business vehicle, commercial vehicle, which we don't currently have. But if you, if you agree with the approach and the numbers, we can shift around. We don't have to decide on whether you get four or three or whatever, but if you like the idea of having it at different levels and it's not all just. A commercial vehicle.
So you thought like a business vehicle, it's like a pickup truck or something like that. A commercial vehicle would probably be like a dump truck or something heavier.
Oh, which size dump truck? Are you talking like a pickup dump or a triaxle?
Well, the traditional definition of commercial is the 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 gross vehicle weight rate of twenty six thousand. So.
I'd use that. I would use that.
So someone could have, you know, that would be the the difference between the two and it's this idea that if they do have two pickup trucks. Or something along those lines, that doesn't necessarily kick them into needing a home occupation. But if they have one pickup truck and two huge pieces of equipment or a couple of triaxes that they just so happen to have parked next to their house. Right, even if there's no other evidence, two triaxle dump trucks parked on a residential property to me warrants a little bit more than.
Hi, I'm thinking about the guys, it's the two of my road there. They got those big uh, those big equipment repair vehicles, they got the van, I mean, they got the crane on the back.
Oh, like the roadside.
Well, they do a heavy equipment repair, but they take their trucks home at night. They don't, their business, they work for someone else. Yeah, but it clearly says all the equipment or.
Yeah.
Or 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 blue core, those two, I'll take it off and. For all intents and purposes, you might think they have a business, but really they're just bringing their commercial vehicle home.
Right.
And then they go to work the next day.
Yeah.
It doesn't really follow this, but it's gonna raise questions, so you would theoretically drive somebody else's triaxle, they take it on then.
Yeah, I don't care. He, I mean, those things come up, tow trucks comes up because. If they have a contractor, the police department or state police, they get a call that there's an accident, they need to respond with a certain amount of time.
Right.
So they can't run to a yard and then pick up a truck and then go out to. Um, so I think that.
But it's not really their business, it's.
Their occupation.
Yeah, yeah, it's right, right. It's interesting stuff, so.
Um, and the other thing, I mean, in another town, I won't say which, we had an application new, just received, it's, I don't know, barn's gotta be. Eight thousand square feet, it's two floors, probably forty feet tall, or probably gonna cost seven hundred thousand dollars. He has a business that involves motorcycles, he's got, he's got an eighteen wheeler that he hauls to bike shows. And he needs something that's long enough to accommodate an eighteen wheeler for him to be able to get it in and. Top, big enough doors and, you know, before you know it. I mean, it's, that's an anomaly, but like. He has a probably a five hundred plus thousand dollar thing that he drives up and down the road, he doesn't want to leave it out in the backyard. Uh, that, again, I don't think that we're gonna see that, but he's just a really big barn. Um, so let me try to clean this up, but if we are in agreement with the business, commercial vehicle thing, then I'll. I'll um, create some language to show how we'll define the difference between the two.
We just, I was registered in the state of Connecticut. There's a difference right there. And when you can't register a triaxle as a. Regular.
Right, right.
Passenger vehicle, so it's automatically registered commercial.
He had me wondering about some of these, if they come in under a farm. You ever seen a lot of.
Crazy, you're not saying have farm plates, but I mean.
Registered farms. Yeah, say where's your reg, your farm registered?
You, he pulled them over and says, yeah, you're, you're from wherever, Talon, and you're all the way on the western side of the state. What's your farm doing all the way out here?
Yeah.
Quitting.
Getting hay, uh.
Getting hay from New York State. We literally have that here, yeah.
We have that here. Got a good bar place, getting steak, getting hay.
That's one of the ways I think you could define it, and others related, it doesn't have a, doesn't have a backup alarm. Has the body been modified? Is it in excess of twenty six thousand pounds? Does it have signage? Like all of these things are ways that you can deal with it. Um, but I'll, I'll pull some, some language to start and then maybe we can.
Cool, all right, so you got enough to.
I think so.
It sounds like the next meeting. All right. Item G approval minutes from April sixteen, twenty twenty four.
We can motion for the minutes?
Hey, discussion. My balls favor. Eight minutes. All right, I made port bond, it's Mansfield, PZC referral.
I didn't understand. Um, oh, there's something here, it is. You might recognize the name on the memo. Um, so we, so I have a memo. The memo, which is from me, actually, we work, we work with the town of Mansfield and the referral. I have a copy which I can give you or I can send you of the sign regulations, but it's like twenty five pages, so I didn't print out. All the red lines, because it's, you know, a tweak here, a tweak there, but essentially we are going through the process of amending. Um, Mansfield's sign regulations to create content neutral signage. Um, and so that. Is what they're considering. If anybody wants it, I have a copy, I can certainly give it to you. It's also on the agenda, posted online. It's something that we've talked about here, it's on our list. Um, we will hopefully get into that once the codification is done. Um, and it's the the idea that you regulate the size, the location, the illumination, the construction of signs, but you don't regulate. What they say or who gets what type of square footage. Uh, so the cannabis business doesn't get any more or less than the Boy Scouts and the Home Occupation and the. Beauty salon, um. So we're pulling all content-based regulation language out of their, their current criteria. Um, so they're, because of the fact that it affects all zones, they're required to, right here. So I have copies, I can make them for you and email them, look at them. I just didn't want to print out like a hundred and fifty pages with the red regs. Ahead of time. But if anybody wants some, you don't have to do anything with it, it's just letting you know.
It's called scouting American. Jamie Place guy changed their name.
Oh.
Scouting America, sorry. It's been a while since.
I don't know. I need to go to Boy Scout, can't like, to planning.
That's why we love you. Didn't you reference those?
I read that earlier.
What? The 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 case law, the.
Reed versus Gilbert.
Where is that?
Uh, it's at the, in the first background summary in the last paragraph, to comply with Reed versus Gilbert.
Oh, okay.
And we talked about that here as well.
Yeah, but I just, I was reminded me of that, that.
Oh, the church. I don't want to do a sign.
All right, you done with that one? So the other, the second item under correspondence is the column, easy theory referral.
Yeah, so this one, it it's in here because it went to wetlands and it went to wetlands because when the applicant did their initial review with some town maps. They thought that we were within five hundred feet. Um, we're not actually, we're like six hundred, but. The statute also says if you can, if there's a reasonable chance that that a portion, a significant portion of traffic may be. You know, whatever, buried out on people in adjacent communities' roads, that it should be repaired. So. I'm including it at this stage, simply so you get it. The proposal is to construct a fifteen thousand square foot medical building right on the parcel that runs adjacent to the uh, exit sixty nine off ramp.
Yeah, with that old house once.
That old house is, is, the house is proposed to stay. Um, but they're, they want to do a long access, build way off the back. I'm not sure what the intent is with it, and the plans that we have, because I do the wetland side there, includes that, that building. Um, and you've, you've gotten there, um, they're working on uh, stormwater reports and other things. And then they'll go to planning and zoning.
Is that ledge?
Uh, not that we've seen. They've got some, some grading and obviously significant portion of it is wetlands. Um, but it doesn't seem like there's any, any ledge, but.
Yeah.
They haven't looked below.
Well, there's ledge, not that.
Yeah, and and the, the wetland that's created right up by the road, if you've ever gone there and you're. You're like me and look at stuff like that, you'll see that when the water comes off and heads towards seventy four, it does pool. Cause that rock kind of comes up and catches it. So what they'll run into, is anybody's guess, but this is just again a referral. Um, you'll get the referral again when it. Or you get, you have an opportunity to comment when it goes to planning and zoning, if you think there's something that is needed, it will have to go to. Uh, DOT for review because they're gonna be, it's been curb cut. Uh, this was already referred to our wetlands commission, it's going before their wetlands commission. In Talon, there'll be a public hearing on that in June. Is that?
I saw the flags, they're flashing. That's what it is, we so far. All right, uh, item I, public participation for items not listed on the agenda. You know, any public we have is online tonight. Any, anyone who public have anything tonight? Yes, sir. Ralph.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I can't really speak about anything on the agenda other than to mention I sent an email regarding E one. Um, to the chair and to Mike. Uh, I would appreciate uh, that you give it some consideration.
Okay, thank. Any other uh, public uh, participation tonight? Okay. Which brings us to item J, staff report discussion. Item one, one year review of cannabis establishment regulations.
So when we adopted the cannabis regulations, we, there was just some discussion that. We would check in and see sort of the status of either how they were working, how the business was or wasn't working and. You know, you're developing these in a vacuum, does the U segment allow statewide? And so it was just wanting to do that check in, so a couple of months shy, but wanted to make sure that if there were any concerns. Related to regs or or the business that, you know. Related to what our current language is, that we had an opportunity.
Been no complaints, right?
Zero. Other than them. Um, donating to the food bank and and being. Um, really responsive and working with Karen on some stuff, some programs and things that she's trying to do. The only feedback that I've had has been positive. And I don't want to say that's been from customers that have just left the. But but they, they've been very responsive. Um. They indicated to me that they aren't doing as well as they hoped.
Right, and you're everywhere.
Yeah, I I think it's really, I I think more for them just geographic location and. There's a new, I don't think this is because of it, but there's one that now is open, Big White Plaza in Talon.
You got one of Willa Man, it's great, that one was busy at first, I was gonna hear it, but it's busy now.
So I'm hopeful that they'll figure something out. He said they're gonna try to do some operational things and. Um, hopefully keep things going. They have nineteen employees. So they are, I mean, it's a fairly substantial employer, actually. When you take off FedEx and TA and so.
If you're gonna have some business, if you're gonna support ninety employees, so.
Well, they're, they're, and this is not, this is not, um. Like, this is not secretive information. They, we, so they, they report their um, in monthly earnings to the state. Those earnings are then reported from the state to us and then we re, we bill them. That three percent, and I don't know if Doug has dealt with it, but but we're seeing.
We've heard some numbers there.
Two to four thousand a month. So far, and the state is several months behind, so they've been seeing an increase month after month. But that's talking January, so we're, I don't know what the most recent are, but a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month.
Well, we better be supporting our local businesses. Well, we better be supporting our local businesses, check on.
No, I mean, the nice part is that it's allocated to very specific things, so there's potentially money to fund stuff that wouldn't have been funded if we had to choose to do it out of the general fund. Um, one of the things is that this could be used to maintain, upgrade or expand, like the sidewalks in South Wellington. Because it would qualify as that, so if we had to go and spend money to do that work out of our own pocket, it might not be a high priority, but if. It falls under only one of four or five things we can use it for, you know, youth programs, educational programs. All those types of things come out of that, human services, a lot of those things.
Those would seem to be the most important thing to use it for.
And those are the only things you can use the cannabis funds for, but maybe not something that we're gonna be allocating general fund dollars to increase year over year. Um, so, I think, you know, Karen is hopeful and she's got some ideas and, you know, thoughts on how to use it. Um. So we'll see, but.
Alright, well, it's good to hear, there's no problems.
No.
Hopefully the business picks up.
What they originally forecast, you remember, was it three million?
Uh, I think those are the projections based upon the mass numbers, um, but the rollout was different with the way Massachusetts did it. And now, now the shift that we have here is that we, the state has allowed the medical dispensaries to flip to be hybrid, and so. Someone that was already doing a lot of ninety percent of this work, now they're just selling on the retail side, and they were pretty well equipped to be able to just kind of go for it. And so a lot of the medical retailers have picked up this just adult use, um. So I, I don't know if there's been any limitations related to production, there's really only a handful of.
All the young business people make decisions like that, knowing you're gonna impact, like, you know, what's it?
Yeah.
You know, just set it up to like torpedo on the.
Yeah, I I mean, I, last I heard, there were, there were less than ten producers in the state. So you have a very small number of people that are feeding everybody, and so like, as is the case with these guys, they are, because of the, the social. Uh, the Social Equity Council licenses is what what they qualify for, so their, their overarching sort of supporting. Entity that qualifies goes and gets the license, and I think they got multiple. They have to be separated geographically, I think twenty five miles from another one of their licenses. So they have to locate and choose what to do, but they operate several.
Is that a producer or a retail?
Retail, so if you have the social equity license.
So how could you have one in town and they weren't very well?
Cause they're different operators. But there are some operations that got seven licenses, so they have to be spread out all over the place, so. Someone that qualifies for that license can either locate it in a community that is a, uh, I forget what they call it. Socially something or disenfranchised, I don't know what they call it, but you can either locate the retail operation in that community or. If the person that gets the license is from one of those communities, they can then take that and bring it somewhere, so Wellington. Got it because one of the people affiliated with that operation qualified for one, and they're locating in Wellington, but that entity that. Obtained that license cannot locate another license of the same kind within twenty five miles. And, but they're all pulling from that same group of.
Whether it was East Hartford or something, they came here and talked to us originally.
I think it was Hartford. Yeah, so like, the Tallinn folks have one in West Hartford, but Derek Gibbs, he had approval on in Westbrook, I don't know where that stands, maybe somewhere else.
Things, like somebody's learning a lesson to like microbreweries and things like that, there's so many of them, they started to fail.
Right, right.
Just the market's so big, and there's still, there's still the illegal trade and the stuff too, that hasn't gone away.
Yeah, and 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 the explanation to me was that they offer slightly different. Things, and so people might go someplace where they prefer this or that, I don't know, I honestly have no idea, I've not been in there, um. But that was, it's not an industry I know very much of, other than the regulatory side, and I don't know what the statewide numbers have been. As far as if they're projecting and get or seeing more or less sales statewide, and is this just the whole industry has fallen flat, or. There's a couple of users that are really just seeing a ton of uh, activity in some of these more peripheral businesses, I'm not sure.
Alright, well, at least, you know, they're, they've got a good. Citizen of the business, you know, there's things, that's good.
So overall, there's no need to make changes.
Alright, keep going, carry on, let's see what goes on, when do I talk about it, yeah?
Well, so we made the, the second revision to basically, yeah, and there's no one else that's gonna have a retailer. Cause they gotta be, you know.
Well, you want the one you have to do well, don't you do?
Yeah, so there, there really is not gonna be another retailer. As far as I can tell, based upon the language that we have currently, so it would just be, I mean, all chance that someone decided to. Learn something else. And I don't think it's gonna happen, because we don't have to.
Okay. Site, okay, uh, it's eight fifty P M, meeting insurance.